Economic Development Virtual Economic Development Committee Meeting. On Tuesday, March the ninth, twenty twenty-one at three o'clock P M. We are actually, we are virtual, but we are at City Hall. I am in my office and I want to call the meeting to order. I would like to, I guess, get approval for the minutes of last week.
Motion to approve the minutes?
It's been moved and I second it. It's been moved and properly second. All in favor say aye. Aye. The ayes have it. Okay, now we're gonna move on to the next part of the agenda. A I say loan credit agreement with community. Uh, okay, who's handling this? Is Griffin Lassender on board?
Certainly. Counselors, Arenia Johnson, Project Management Department of Innovation Economic Opportunity.
Yes, sir. It's Paul, go with it, Arenia.
Yes, sir. This is an application for the Birmingham Business Development Loan in the amount of one million dollars to Community Shells. Community Shells is the entity that will be purchasing and taking over the Save-A-Lot Center over in Denison, over at the Heritage Plaza. You may not be aware, but Save-A-Lot is closing down all their corporate stores. We were fortunate in the event that we had Community Shells to come in and purchase the store and retain all the employees without them losing their jobs. In addition, they're gonna add about six to eight more full-time jobs along with that. Uh, the companion item along with the Birmingham Business Loan is Item Four, which is the city is gonna offer incentives and up to the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars over a ten-year term. Uh, and what the terms of the agreement, uh, is that it's gonna be all driven by actual sales tax revenue and over the average seventy-five thousand dollars a year for up to ten years. But it's kind of front-loaded, so seventy percent then it'll come back down to about fifty percent. So, uh, it's, we were able to save us grocery store that's heavily dependent on that area over there. And that sector of the city there is absolutely nothing. And we was fortunate that we were able to backfill the Save-A-Lot Center. And, uh, this will be the third store in the city of Birmingham. This was the same entity that also saved the Village Market over in, um, Village and, and what was it? District Two, and they also bought the, uh, the Harvest Market down on Second Avenue downtown. So it's, this is the third store, so they have been a wonderful corporate partner. And we look forward to working with him and trying to, uh, add additional grocery stores to the city of Birmingham, sir.
Wow, that is fantastic. Whose district is that? Is that Zimmerman's district?
Yes, sir, it's District Six. Yes, sir, it's District Six. And we, we, yes, sir.
Hmm, very good, very good. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see, uh, that happening and, and maintaining employees.
Yes, sir. Well, this is, this was the second store when they took over the Village Market Store over in Eastlake. They, they maintained every employee and added additional employees. They had a community outreach program, which was fantastic. The people demanded the store stayed open and they went to an area that nobody wanted to go. And this is another instance that they have stepped up and, uh, provided that additional service that we're looking for.
Well, I, I haven't heard from Senate, I haven't heard from Councilwoman Zimmerman yet, but, uh, I'm sure she-
We met with, we, uh, met with Budget and Finance yesterday evening. She's aware of the project and supportive of it as well.
Okay, fantastic, fantastic. Well, I'm gonna open it up to some of my other colleagues and, uh, uh, I, I see we have Wardine Alexandra and Coach, uh, Daryl Quinn, which is on the committee. Uh, do either one of you all wanna make any comments or say anything?
No, I'd just say, you know, kudos to you guys for helping it happen. Um, you know, we, uh, Birmingham is a food desert. So anything that we can do to, um, retain it and expand our, uh, access to healthy foods is, you know, something that's addressing an important community need. So, thank you.
Councilor Quinn, this is the same entity that have Harvest, uh, uh, District Two on Second Avenue. So this is Austin, uh, President Pro Tem. We talked about this yesterday in, uh, Budget and Finance. So this is the same project from yesterday.
Well, yeah, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say, we did hear this presentation yesterday in Budget and Finance. And one of the reasons I joined, I just wanted to, I don't think I thanked the team yesterday for, um, bringing this to our residents. And I do have some residents in District Seven that are very close to that store as well. So you've helped to add to, uh, healthy food options for residents in Seven as well. So thank you all and your team for bringing this to us. So I appreciate that.
Thank you so much, man. And, and, and you had some information, some questions you asked yesterday regarding the, the, uh, product line and the price points. Everything is gonna remain the same. So it's gonna be the same Save-A-Lot, same products, same price points as they were accustomed to. So there won't be any hike in prices or reduction in, uh, levels of service. In fact, they'll probably have healthier foods even coming in now with this group.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. That question yesterday, uh, counselors had been, would it be the same price points? Or would it be the same top quality, uh, services and foods? And I know they have kind of like a wholesale approach for, I believe. But, uh, very excited to see that we're not limiting ourselves in what we're offering to our residents by providing this. So thank you.
They're actually expanding, uh, they're probably bringing, uh, like, uh, vitamins and other health, healthy food options to that community as well. So they're expanding and broadening that, uh, scope of, uh, healthy food initiatives.
Uh, and counselors, this is, this is Kelvin Datcher. Uh, I hope y'all support this because it's about a hundred feet from my house. So I can, you know, it's easy to make a, make a, that last bit of question for my wife.
I stand corrected, y'all take it off the table. If it's helping Kelvin Datch, y'all just pull the plug on this. It's my project, I brought it, but I, I rescind it all. So I take it back, all the good things I said, if it's gonna help Kelvin, just, I, I, I rescind this whole project.
It, it was, it was on the fast track, but we gotta kill it now.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I agree with you thousand percent.
Well, let me say this, we are city councilmen, so we're concerned, even though it's not in our perspective districts, we're concerned about the entire city of Birmingham. It's a great project. Uh, if they do any, any, any ceremony or ribbon cutting, you let us know. But we are all for the, for the project. And at this time, uh, let me ask you this, number four, is that a part of it?
Yes, sir, that's, that's, that's the incentive agreement that we're gonna be abating actual sales tax revenue that they're gonna be creating on sales taxes over a ten-year period. And it's gonna average about seventy-five thousand dollars a year, which is miniscule. But, you know, we have to offer some sort of incentives to keep these grocery stores open in these areas that are underserved. Uh, again, this is the third grocery store. Uh, we're looking at additional stores. They are great partners. So if you have locations in your district that you think that'd be formidable, that they'll be, uh, open to, please by all means submit it to me and I'll be more than happy to have the ownership evaluated and have Save-A-Lot think that it's a good opportunity, they're open to, uh, expansion.
Fantastic. If there are no other questions, I'd like to get a motion to move this to the next level to the full council.
So moved?
It's been moved and second, it's been moved and properly second to move this on to the full council. All in favors, uh, say here the ayes? Aye. Opposes? No opposes, our, our ayes, it's been moved to the full council. Thank you, uh, for, for bringing this to us. And, and, uh, we are fulfilling the mission on getting more grocery stores and bringing them to communities. So we're excited about that. Uh, on number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman of the committee. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. On number five, who's bringing this? Orders authorized the mayor to execute, uh, renovation agreement. Who, who, okay, on the Zimmer?
Councilman, that would be me, Janice Dothard.
Okay, Janice, how you doing?
I'm well, how are you?
Very good. You have the floor.
Okay, uh, we have, uh, Tab, uh, I think Tab should, I thought it's not Tab here with, uh, uh, Zimmerman Properties was supposed to be online. But, um, I think you've seen that presentation, but the Zimmerman Properties is a, uh, company that, uh, developers that we're looking to develop the old NSD High School. They would have like two hundred and forty-four units of affordable housing. And, uh, and we're, they're gonna use the gymnasium as a commercial portion for a grocery store to, uh, go in that area also. We'll be reaching out to, uh, the same company to see if they would do one in that area as well. Um, oh, okay, I see Amanda is on, we have a presentation that we can, uh, wanted to show you all about the project to give you a little bit more information as, as to what we're proposing in that area.
Go right ahead.
Here as well, Miss Janice.
Oh, okay, I thought I saw you earlier, Tab. Um, Councilor here, you, you, you may have, I believe you've seen this already. You've probably met, uh, Tab Bullard before. But I would like for your other, the other councils to, uh, see this presentation, if that's okay.
Go right ahead, you have the floor.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'll lead, uh, this time. And thank you so much, Miss, uh, Dothard and, uh, Councilor Hilliard for giving us this opportunity to present our proposed Enslie mixed-use development. I'll go ahead and share my screen for the presentation and we'll get started. So, um, thank you all for this opportunity to present to the Economic Development Committee for the city of Birmingham. Uh, we're very excited about this, uh, this chance to become a development partner in the community and to bring our quality affordable housing, uh, to the city of Birmingham and especially to the Enslie neighborhood. We know how much that neighborhood means to the, uh, metro Birmingham area. And we hope that this development will be seen as a true positive impact and asset for the community, uh, to bring back a lot of families and a lot of, uh, a lot of initiatives to the area. So, um, with that said, um, you, couple of years ago, Zimmerman Properties, we're based out of Springfield, Missouri, but me and my colleagues, Robert Fink and Jay Compton, as well as our consultant, uh, Ben Parker, are based here in Atlanta. And together, we cover the entire southeast, which encompasses Georgia, Alabama, Tennessee, the Carolinas and Florida. A couple of years ago, uh, we identified a group called TriStar here in Metro Atlanta and an affiliated nonprofit of theirs, Star C. And very quickly, we realized we had a lot in common of what we were trying to accomplish. Um, and that was basically advancing affordable housing and education through tax credit partnerships that, uh, we've been involved in since two thousand. Zimmerman Properties has developed over a hundred properties across fourteen states. And our affiliated management company that is pretty much wholly owned by our, uh, principals, Will Hoyt Properties, manages in excess of fourteen thousand units. Uh, as part of our ownership structure, we are long-term owners and operators. So what we're proposing to you today and the company that, uh, we represent, we plan on being long-term members for the Enslie community and the city of Birmingham. So rest assured that if there are ever any questions that you all have, uh, you all can reach out to us at any time. Uh, if you all have any concerns or wanna see any, uh, more details, we'll be more than glad to provide that information, uh, to the city and to the Enslie community, uh, as we progress this development along. For this development, in specifically, you, this is kind of the project team that we're proposing to the city. Um, obviously, you've got Zimmerman Properties and TriStar. Um, and then Star C will be the wraparound service provider. Since Star C itself is also based in the city of Atlanta, we know that it's very important to find people who are already engaged and active in communities. And that's why we've partnered with Eastlake Initiative and their new coalition of nonprofits, Drive Together Jefferson County, to basically create our full wraparound service project team. Uh, and we also, through this development, were introduced to an outstanding, uh, new design firm, David Baker Architects, headed by Amanda Loper, uh, in the Birmingham area. They're a San Francisco-based company, uh, but we really like that they're based in Birmingham. They have a lot of roots and connection to Birmingham. And we're really excited about, um, doing more deals with David Baker Architects. And as far as outside of the ownership and development team, we are targeting to partner with the city of Birmingham, obviously through this redevelopment agreement. Um, we'll be looking to obtain most of our financing through, from the Alabama Housing Finance Authority. And also, you understanding that the Housing Authority for the Birmingham District, it is the specialized housing partner for the city. So it would not be proper of us to come into the city of Birmingham without reaching out to the Housing Authority of the Birmingham District, making sure that they're understanding of what we're trying to do and they're supportive as well too. So we're presenting to them later this month, uh, in the summer to confirm their involvement in the deal. And I'll let Star C talk more about this. But most importantly, we'll be looking to partner with Birmingham City Schools, Wildon Elementary, which we're zoned for, as well as the U A B School of Medicine as a, as a, as a wellness provider. And many of these will be overseen by Star C. And with your, uh, if it's okay with you, I'd like to turn this over now to Audrey Rees. He's on the line with us from Star C. And if he could provide a lot more information in detail, um, as to who Star C is and what they do and who they look to, what they look to provide in their developments.
Thank you, Tab. Uh, I'm glad to be on with everyone today and appreciate the opportunity to tell you about Star C as well as to hopefully partner with you in the community work. As Tab mentioned, my name is Audrey Rees. I'm the Executive Director of Star C and I'm also a partner with TriStar. As Tab mentioned, uh, Star C is a five oh one C three nonprofit. We are based in the metro Atlanta region. And you can see on this slide in front of you, the services that we provide. We have four physical site locations across the region where we provide a, and on a free onsite after-school program, free healthcare or low-cost wellness programs, food security programs and community gardens. And then at over three hundred and thirty properties across the metro Atlanta area, we provide an eviction relief fund. Next slide, please. All of our programs are designed to, to underscore and undergird education. And we do that by reducing transparency. We want to help the families remain stabilized in their homes so that children can remain stable in, in their schools. Oftentimes, low-income people may move around and we want to break that cycle. Our wellness program is done in collaboration. And whenever anybody talks about Star C, you will hear the words collaboration and partnership a great deal. We don't want to reinvent the, the wheel with anything that we do, but we want to come in and establish collaborations with existing entities in the community. From the wellness perspective, we do that by partnering with fairly qualified health, uh, clinics who serve the same families and children that we serve, primarily lower-income people. And through that partnership, Star C offers free or low-cost, our healthcare services, basic healthcare services, medical exams, dental exams, eye exams, things of that nature. And if residents at our communities cannot afford to pay for these services through their insurance or on a sliding scale, then we'll cover those costs for them. The healthy eating program, it is something that we're taking a broader approach to in our partnership with Zimmerman. At our existing properties, we have it so that, um, as some of them, we have community gardenings and gardens. And that's where residents for a very low nominal cost of about twenty dollars a year can have their own dedicated garden plot, which they can maintain and grow fruits and vegetables of their choice. And then we also come in and, and partner with other agencies to provide feeding programs. We do that through our summer camp. And last year, uh, with the COVID shutdowns, we expanded those feeding programs to encompass the entire families because, as you know, so many people were having issues with that, uh, and had to stay home due to COVID. So we brought in programs that would cover everyone under healthy eating.
Thank you very much, Audrey, for touching on those three critical wraparound services that we are planning and proposing for the Enslie redevelopment. We think it'll be a tremendous asset for the families that we serve. Um, and we also, you plan on doing a lot of local outreach within the community. We've, we've engaged in the community, you enlightening them to what we're proposing for their development. Uh, we plan to continue that engagement moving forward. I'll let Amanda Loper kind of speak to that as we go forward. Uh, but we're identifying some of contractors, um, to be our general contractor for this deal. And we will be sitting, setting stipulations with them to look to engage in maybe weebees and debes of the Enslie neighborhood and the greater Atlanta Birmingham area on, uh, you hopefully at least thirty percent, uh, of the total general construction contract. Um, and we'll be working with the city, um, and Janice and her team to identify those companies, similar as was done on, uh, the McCormick Baron Building and the, and the developer for that site. So we do plan to engage and hire people locally. Um, that would include hiring our onsite property management and property maintenance persons. Uh, we'll hire them from the local community, but we'll train them nationally to kind, to be certified under our, uh, our Will Hoyt Property flagship so that they know exactly, you know, the quality and the care that we put into our developments so that the city can be comfortable with that. You, they have a high-quality operating, you know, uh, community in the Enslie neighborhood. And so getting back to engaging the community as far as Enslie and the redevelopment goes, I'd like to turn it over to Amanda so she can give you a little bit more about her firm and, and what we've done today on engaging the community and how we plan to continue that going forward. And we'll also take a, uh, a quick dive into the overall site plan. So with that, uh, this is Amanda Loper with David Baker Architects.
Hi, thanks, Tab. Um, yeah, as Tab mentioned, uh, community involvement, meeting early, meeting often, is really a part of our design process and we're unified as a team about that. We were able to do two community meetings at the end of last year virtually, um, where we solicited community input and got some good feedback there. And one of the things we promised them is to come back, you know, when we're past the site plan level after this rezoning effort, when we start, uh, continue architectural design. So that is a process we, um, are well intent on continuing. Um, oh, Tab, next slide, thank you. So as Tab mentioned, and I've gotten to meet some of you, but I'm part of a larger firm based out of San Francisco where I lived for eleven years. But, uh, I'm an Alabama girl who came back home four years ago to really do the kind of affordable housing and equitable development I'd been able to be a part of there here. So it is a great honor to be working, um, in this community. Next slide. So I think you all know how great of a site this is, but you know, it's a little over ten acres and it represents, without the functioning high school, a big hole in the Enslie neighborhood. Um, and we see a lot of opportunity though with that. So next slide, one of the first really clear things to us, uh, that we needed to do was extend the existing neighborhood grid and fabric through the site. So that means bringing Avenue K from the south all the way to the north, which is a really exciting con- connection, particularly like for the residents of Tuxedo Court, you know, being able to move all the way south. Um, and this also includes extending Twenty-third Street to terminate into that new Avenue K extension. So we've got kind of a completed city, city neighborhood grid. Um, and then also, we wanna continue the alley, oh, sorry, go back more. Wanna continue the, uh, alley pattern as well. So that's that green line through there. And then we also wanna be mindful of other pedestrian connections, um, that are shown in these green arrows that I'll talk more about. And so we wanna make sure that the new streets that we extend are very much designed around people and safety. Um, a lot of street trees planting, parallel parking, you know, they'll feel like, you know, neighborhood streets. Wanna prioritize pedestrians in terms of, um, making sure we've got safe sidewalk and, uh, street crossings. And the other idea with the living alley, the photo on the left kind of shows, you know, what some, some of these alleys kind of already feel like. Um, and we wanna use this to where it feels really almost like an urban trail system so that you as a person could feel safely walking through here, our kids riding their bicycles. Um, and we see these as very planted and having, uh, permeable paving. And then the other thing architecturally from kind of a bigger scale is we really wanted to mirror the neighborhood scale. I mean, Enslie is a historic neighborhood with an incredible fabric. And we want very much for this project to feel like it, um, kind of sits well in harmony with the existing neighborhood and wasn't airlifted from a foreign place. So the way that we're proposing to do that is to have two-story stacked flats along Avenue J, along Twenty-Fourth and along Twenty-Second, so that the scale of the new buildings along Avenue J really are reflective of the existing single-family homes across the street. Um, we also wanna use those living alleys that I was talking about to add a, a two-story structure that would have a carriage house unit above and then parking below. That way, parking is provided throughout the site, um, but you don't get the kind of visibility of the parking lot. And we're also, um, able to add density, what I call invisible density, that doesn't really, uh, disturb the character of the neighborhood. And then we're concentrating, um, the, we have some three-story apartment buildings over where the kind of orange blob is and right across from Tuxedo Court, which we intend on articulating those at the lower roof line. So there would actually be, um, a very similar scale as those tuxedo buildings across the street. And so again, from Avenue J, you're not seeing that three-story volume. And then we've got some parking centrally located throughout the site, but also have a larger three-story parking deck where we're calling that a reservoir because it's closer to the denser buildings, but also can be, uh, hidden by planted buffers and beyond, behind the other buildings. And so this is just a, a precedent of what those two-story flats can feel like along Avenue J. We have not gotten to architecture just yet. So these are just examples for scale. Next slide. Um, and this is showing a three-story apartment building we did actually with, in a, a single-family neighborhood where we really paid attention to balconies and architect, our, um, architectural finistration to make sure it really felt like it could be part of the neighborhood, even though it was a different, a different type of building. And then this is, are some ideas showing what those carriage houses, uh, units could be like over parking. Again, these are just kind of examples of that typology where you'd be able to pull into a garage parking space from that alley, but then there would be a residence above. And one of the most exciting opportunities we found in walking the site is identifying the Enslie High School Gymnasium as a structure that we could potentially save. And, uh, Tab can talk more about this, but you know, they have committed, um, to providing this space as a commercial food base, for a commercial food base type tenant. Um, architecturally, I think it has incredible opportunity with this iconic entry. Uh, the interior, um, is really exciting. I think there's a lot of ways to really honor the history of the site in saving the space. And so this is a quick sketch that shows what that might feel like. So that new grocery, uh, store to the right, which is, used to be the gem, to the left, that new, um, Avenue K extending through with the two-story flats that look out onto that street. Uh, the little building in red, it would be the Early Learning Center. And then beyond that would be those three-story apartment buildings. And then in terms of open space, you know, we are adding, um, two hundred and forty-four homes. So we wanna make sure this is balanced livable density. So we have this idea to create a new linear park along Twenty-Fourth Street, which would create, you know, a new green space for the neighborhood, but also it would give visibility to the high school gymnasium so that people can see where that new, um, grocery store user is. You can be able to see it from Avenue J. And then, um, pretty close to that, uh, building, we've got the Community Leasing Center and the Early Learning Center. And that is surrounded also by courtyards and green spaces. And so these are just some examples of past projects where we've done this and wanna let y'all know we're thinking about, you know, lighting, um, livability, but also safety of these open spaces. So we would make sure, you know, there's plenty of eyes and doors on all of these new connections. Um, we have an opportunity between the two-story flats and the carriage house units to create shared gardens and backyards. And again, just thinking about, you know, this, our porch culture that we have, of course, all over Birmingham in the south, but also again, the kind of safety and security that making sure that there are stoops and porches on kind of all these active building edges really helps build, um, helps foster community, but also helps keep things safe with more eyes on the street. And, uh, Tab mentioned this earlier in the presentation, but this idea about community gardens, which we are really excited about. So we've left a lot of room in our courtyard planning to think about, uh, solar access for where these community gardens can go. And so this is a quick sketch from the corner of Avenue J to our left and Twenty-Fourth Street to the right. You can see how that new linear park opens up visibility to the high school gymnasium. And everything else are these kind of two-story stacked flats with those porches and stoops, either out on the sidewalk or onto the park. Another exciting opportunity we see with this park is, um, the opportunity to really honor the Enslie High School, um, and its role in the community. Um, you know, I know like, we're bummed, like, I'm sure a lot of people are that the high school can't be saved, but we are dedicated to honoring that history. So I think there's a lot of creative ideas we could do here. This is something we're also asking for community input on, is, you know, can we save the bricks? Can we save this concrete sign and put it in the park? Can we make new pathways? Um, how can we tell the really important history of this site while we kind of evolve its use? And so this is an aerial sketch that really just helps you flesh out the scale and character of all those pieces that I've talked about, starting from the bottom left, Avenue J. And we've got those two-story flats. Another thing too is that we're kind of pushing and pulling those back from the street just a little bit because that's how the actual neighborhood is because it developed over time. So you see that variation. Um, then beyond that, you've got those shared gardens, then the carriage houses on that living alley. You can see Avenue K, how it spans from north to south. And the new Twenty-third Street, or the extended Twenty-third Street terminating into Avenue K. And the new 23rd Street or the extended 23rd Street terminating into Avenue K and into that early learning center. We also have some tuck under parking for those apartment buildings up to the north that's accessible through that drive where there's green space. On the other side of that building would be kind of a pedestrian greenway with stoops that look out onto to that green space. And then that kind of backwards E apartment building again was kind of designed for efficiency, but also making sure that we are bringing green spaces into all these buildings. And then as we move down to the plan, you can see where we've got the three story parking deck. We've got the new commercial program and then we also have a surface lot for that new commercial program that'll be in the high school gym. And then to quickly point out the nutrition facts, we're talking about 244 new homes, a mix of one, twos and three bedrooms. We do have adequate parking for the residential retail, residential and retail uses, as well as some public guest spaces. We are implementing some transit demand strategies like covered secure bike parking. We're very open to talking about a bus stop here. The city mentioned that might be. This would be a good opportunity for that. We love that. And so we are leveraging a little bit of a parking reduction, but we've worked with the city to kind of come up with what that that would be. And this is a view from Avenue J, looking down at that early learning center. You've got those stacked flats to the left and to the right, and you can see how that apartment building kind of nestles in the back there. And then these are just some examples of what that early learning center could be like. We've, this is a one that we've done in another affordable housing project, you know, thinking about durability on all the finishes that the kids touch, but putting warmth where you get a lot of bang for your buck on the ceiling and making sure that they are open to open spaces and play areas. Such as this one.
Well, we don't want to keep rambling on and take up all the time. We'd love to have any comments and hear any comments and take any questions you all may have for us. Any recommendations you may have for us as we continue our community engagement and continue down the path of refining and perfecting our proposed development. So thank you all again for this opportunity to present and you, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Absolutely. Well, I want to thank you all at this time. I want to open it up to any of my other colleagues who may have questions. Counselor Quinn of Wardy and still.
Yes. I really wish that was here to join us. Hopefully he's up to speed on this project. But you know, this is dips in with the line of work that he's in and has done in the past. So I'd, you know, be interested to hear his insights on this project. In the meantime, I was wondering if perhaps Kelvin or Janice could help us get perspective on the, you know, the the big picture of the of the project. We're talking about 1.5 million grant here as the item that's before us. But talk to us about the project as a whole, you know, what does the total investment look like? You know, where's the the financing coming from and all of those different aspects?
So, so Kelvin at your mayor's office and I'll turn to Janice in a minute and then we'll talk, maybe Tab can jump in as well. But just kind of the the big picture is, you know, the mayor and the council have been committed to neighborhood revitalization. This is kind of probably one of the more exciting projects that we've been able to really pull together using a variety of, you know, the city made a relationship and, you know, working with the school system to obtain the building, working with the Zimmerman folks. And I E O has done a phenomenal job of moving that, planning and zoning has had to be involved. But this is a perfect kind of companion to the work that's happening not far away in downtown Insley with the Rasm McCormick Building and with the other kinds of facade grants and those things that we're going to leverage with those businesses as well in that area. I mean, having that retail is vital, but not having the residential to make it is, you know, that's really what, you know, if we're going to do wholesale revitalization, they've got to be coexisting. And the fact that these things are happening at the same time shows really kind of a, you know, a perfect storm for us in terms of using all of our resources in terms of being creative. But the CDA dollars that the mayor told this council that, hey, we're going to be focusing on on the west side and we'll be focusing on the far east side with the dollars outside of, you know, the 4.1 million from CDA that went to Caraway. So we are really trying to be as creative as possible with the resources that we have, even during the pandemic, especially during a pandemic to have this opportunity and have the great work that you've seen from Tab and that team and the creativity from Amanda and a really great work from I E O. I really want to make sure that Janice and those people get to take a bow because this has not been easy to get to get us to this point. But in terms of the overall numbers, Tab may be able to talk about that or maybe Janice can talk about that. But the 1.5 comes from the CDA refinancing that you all approved a couple of months back.
Yes, and the 1.5 is to help bring the grocery store to the area and also to clean up that blight so they can go ahead and knock the building down and be able to do this overall development. Believe this looking like somewhere around 51 million for the total investment. But Tab, you can confirm that. And I know they're also looking at, they were on the budget of finance for home funds through our community development on yesterday that was approved. And and they will be, they're going before the Alabama Housing Financial Authority, what's called AHFA for funding and the vouchers through the H A B D funding as well. Tab, you can probably chime in and give us a little bit more, but oh, and then the sales price is the same, the 50,000 that we paid for the building. We have done anything with it. The building has just been sold just as it is. Where we bought it is still in its bare condition. So this will clear that blight from that in that area immediately. Tab, you can jump in and give us some other numbers for us.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Quinn, who is the other counselor that you were curious if we had reached out to?
Yeah, Clint Woods. He's in destruction and has worked with housing authorities in as part of his career. So I think he would have, you know, unique perspective.
And I'll make a commitment that we'll reach out to him directly ourselves this week.
Okay.
As for the overall deal and to give you a little bit more specifics, so 244 units, we're looking at right at $224,000 a unit in construction. So that's just under $55 million. As Ms. Janice indicated, we did go before the Community Development Committee Budget and Finance Council yesterday, they agreed to the preliminary commitment of 1.25 in City of Birmingham Home Funds. And then obviously the city grant that is on the table today and the acquisition of the high school for $50,000, that's part of the redevelopment agreement we've been negotiating with the city for almost two years. We're just over two years now and our commitment to the city is that we will handle the building demolition and abatement of the site as well as commit to stabilizing the former high school gymnasium and making that available and converting it into hopefully a commercial fresh food grocery space, something that would bring a new grocery store to the Insley neighborhood food desert, but most importantly, bring fresh food, bring healthy foods to the area. So we're actively looking for partners to come into that space. And and what we're proposing is it's just under 15,000 square feet, the high school itself. We stabilize it and then we work out with the operator tenant improvements or what their monthly rent would be. And we would try to to size that annual rent rather to a below market rent to help ensure that they have long term sustainability. Speaking to the units, we'll be targeting 30% and 40% AMI households as well as 60% AMI households with rents going up to 685 to $900 toward the area. But with approximately 67% of the units, we'll have families that are only paying 30% of their income. And then we'll look to the Housing Authority of Birmingham District to help provide rental assistance when and where possible or as needed.
So what what percentage of the units are going to be market rate?
We won't have any market rate. If we were to do market rate, that would take away from our financing that is provided through the taxes bonds and 4% low income housing tax credits that Alabama Housing Finance Authority allocates. So this is a 4% tax credit deal. And so we were looking to target 50, 30% and 70% AMI units. However, Alabama Housing Finance does not support currently the new income averaging rule that the IRS has put out. They don't have the, they don't have the mechanisms in place to allow that for us to target a higher band of income. So we're working within the constraints of what they allow under their program right now and and working with the Housing Authority of the Birmingham District to make sure this deal has long term financial feasibility.
Counselor Quinn, Mr. Chairman, so you'll see kind of how how many layers there are to this deal. And that's why I was really giving a big kudos to I E O, but and Tabs, folks for being really creative. The Alabama Housing Finance Authority has been really good partners with the city of Birmingham. They're supporting us on a number of initiatives right now. And so, you know, we just want you guys to know that, you know, we're bringing, again, we're leveraging every resource we have to make these things happen for our community. I did speak with Counselor Hoyt at length yesterday. He was very enthusiastic and support for for this project. And so we're thankful for this opportunity to come before you guys. And, you know, we have to move, continue to move this the project. But you guys let us know ideas and engagement. They are open to working with the community as well. So this is, this is exciting and it's a big doggone deal.
Well, I want to say thank you first of all for everybody working together to make this project possible. I'm so excited that we've gotten something like this coming to District Nine. I would only say, I think I've said this to Kelvin and others, is that we just need to promote it more so people can know what we're actually doing and and what we're planning to get done. I am down to 9% and it's telling me my iPad is going to shut off shortly. So with that, if there is no other, I would like to entertain a motion to move this on to the full council. It's removed second. It's been moved and properly second. All in favor? Aye? Aye? Okay, the ayes have it. Any nays? No nays. This has been moved on to the full council. I'm excited. I can't wait to start talking about it. I've been talking about it for the longest. I know that we're all city councils and officials. So we all have something to be excited about and and others to know that it takes time to make these things happen. With that, I want to ask, is there any old business? Any any new business? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor? Aye? Ayes have it. Any nays? No nays? All in favor? Hey, we are down. I got to 9%. It kept asking me that it was going to shut down in just a moment. So I am excited that we've completed this. May you all continue to have a wonderful evening. We are moving Birmingham forward. Couldn't do it without all y'all help. So I know that each one of you are very important to what we're trying to do and I realize that. So thank you. Let's continue to move forward and I look forward to helping others and continuously make it happen. Thank you, Dr. Quinn, Calvin, Zimmerman Group and all of the rest of this great City Hall staff. Read the word.
Thank you, Council.